They don't trust you with that.
Good afternoon, welcome to the October meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. Please help me start the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item is our roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Leach?
Our visitors include Darlene Bard, Roberta Everslaj, and Patrick Kerschner.
Welcome. Next item on our agenda is our open forum. The open forum section of the board meeting is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum session during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when the matter concerns personnel issues or matters that are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise subject of the subject of review by the college or the board. We have one person who has signed up for the open forum today, Pete Schulte. Mr. Schulte, if you're here and want to come to the podium and give your name and address, we'd be happy to hear your comments.
Hello, my name is Pete Schulte. Address is 1220 North Levyou Drive, Olathe, Kansas 66061. I'm here on behalf of the Campus Ledger, so good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to speak. For those of you I haven't met, like I said, I'm the editor in chief of the Campus Ledger. It's my hope that by now you've had the opportunity to read our most recent staff editorial regarding renaming the Carlson Center. If you haven't, I encourage you to head to a newsstand or hop online, campusledger.com to read that. We recognize that to make this sort of change, the board must be involved. And in our packets today, there are updates to the student code of conduct primarily about, well, sexual misconduct. And we're making these changes regarding sexual conduct but largely ignoring the fact that one of the most prominent buildings on campus is associated with a person, the name of a person who is associated with sexual misconduct. It's our hope by writing the editorial and by being here today that discussions to begin to make this change, especially in light of the 25th anniversary of the building, we hope discussions begin. So, thank you for the time and thank you for consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments and thank you for what you do at the Ledger.
Thank you, appreciate it.
The next item on our agenda is awards and recognitions, and we have a fun one. You gonna announce this?
Yes, I am, thank you.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Trustee Chair Musial. This is about the Volstars. The Volstars are a dedicated group of 175, that's 175 individuals, that donate 10,000-plus hours of service to more than 175 events each year in our performing arts venues in the Carlson Center. More than simply ushers and ticket takers, they are ambassadors for the college. They assist with arts education outreach, arts promotion events throughout the metro area, and JCCC graduation. They go above and beyond the call of duty with the average volunteer giving more than 52 hours of their own time each year. This year, Volstars, this year, the Volstar of the year is Darlene Bard. Now, this award isn't based on length of hours of service. This award recognizes a volunteer who has the patron's experience in mind at all times. Darlene joined the Volstars in 2005 and achieved 500 donated hours in 2013. She is sincere, punctual, willing to help out in any role at any show, and polite and professional with the patrons. Darlene, could you please step up to the podium?
I just want to say thank you. I enjoy ushering a lot, and it's really a great place to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darlene. I'd also like to point out Christina Wright, whose job it is is to manage all these volunteers and does a great job. Every performance is so well, I guess you could say orchestrated, and as a patron there, everyone always compliments her of all stars, so thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
I know we had the chance to come to the appreciation breakfast out at Shawnee Mission Park, I think it was in August, and Dr. Cook was there and Trustee Ingram was there, and it was great to see, and I can't remember the highest number of volunteer hours, but I think it was over 2,500, if I remember right. So, I also remember in August of 2014 at the all-campus convocation, when the alarm went off and it said evacuate the building, evacuate the building, and everybody kind of got up, didn't know what to do, and started to evacuate the building, and the Volstars stayed behind, and I said, "Come on." And they said, "No, we have to get everybody else out." And I get, I mean, that, a high tribute for somebody who's a volunteer that says, "I'm going to be the last one out of the building." So, Darlene, on behalf of the board, thank you, and please pass along, Emily, and to the rest of the Volstars how much we appreciate. We literally could not do the Performing Arts Series or any of the cultural events in, in the Carlson Center without Volstars. We couldn't simply afford the cost, so thank you very much. Next item is our Student Senate report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you once again for allowing me to come share with you the goings-on and ambitions of Student Senate. Last month I spoke to you, I shared with you that for the first time in a while, Student Senate was almost full, with 25 out of 30 seats filled. I also predicted at that time that we would continue to, excuse me, continue to fill the remaining seats. I'm glad to say that now we only have one more seat to fill, so a great accomplishment, not by me, but by the other senators and recruiting members. As the Student Senate has done the past, we are again sponsoring the JCCC Gives this semester, a program that allows people to give gifts to anonymous families within the JCCC community. We have begun accepting nominations for families to receive gifts, and there's a link to nominate at the JCCC Senate page on the college website. Our Service and Fundraising Committee is working to create this year's fundraiser for JCCC Gives, and we will soon be accepting donations for that. Student Senate has been very active, both in approving the formation of new clubs and distributing funds to existing clubs. So far this year, we have heard from and approved the JCCC College Progressive Club, the Paper Role Playing Game Club, the Informal Philosophers Club, and the Web Development and Digital Media Club. We have also been able to distribute $15,366.97 out of our allotted $38,000 to clubs, including JCCC Model United Nations, International Club, Graphic Design Club, and the Student Kansas Association of Interpreters. We also have a number of Painting Club requests and budget requests to review in the coming weeks. Finally, there's one issue that I think Student Senate must consider, and I know all of you are already having conversations about it. Just a few weeks ago, we were shocked to hear of a mass shooting at a community college campus in Oregon, not very different from our own. Shortly after that tragedy, I was at a national student government conference in St. Louis, and we woke up that Friday of the conference to learn of a shooting at a college campus in Oregon. That shooting had such an impact on everyone at the conference that a special session was called, and instead of breaking up into our separate sessions, we all gathered for one session. And during that assembly, we discussed our role in campus safety, but we also heard from a man who, he's from Casper College in Wyoming, and he had been friends with, he'd been a tutor to the shooter, and he was friends with the victim. And that was a very emotional talk, obviously, and right after that ended, we heard of another college shooting in Texas. With this issue of campus safety being forced into our minds, Student Senate is acting on it. On November 11th, we plan to host a town hall meeting where a panel of key players and our campus safety will be able to address the students. We also have a, we will also be having conversations at a couple of our upcoming meetings about how Student Senate can help to ensure the JCCC remains a safe place for everyone who visits our campus. It is an honor for Student Senate to be a lot of voice here at the Board of Trustees meetings, and I'd like to express my sincere thanks for your perpetual willingness to work with us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I think I'm going to go ahead and move the agenda item and talk about, a little bit about collegial steering, because it was, our collegial steering meeting on Tuesday was dedicated to safety and security issues. I know that there have been briefings at Faculty Senate and Faculty Association about that following the UMCW, Community College shootings, and we want to make sure that we include the students in that as well. It is, none of us can do our job if we don't feel safe and secure on campus. I mentioned at collegial steering that the trustees are not the ones on campus. We're not here every day. We, our risk of being involved is less than anybody else's because we're not here all the time, so it is, it is a priority. There are ongoing efforts that will, will continue throughout this semester to try to find the best practices. We have our COPS program, keeping our people safe. We have our behavioral intervention team to try to identify folks that are, that have maybe in need of an intervention or counseling. We obviously have our certified law enforcement staff, which we greatly appreciate, which is different than an awful lot of community colleges. So there are lots of things that we do. One of the things that I think is worth mentioning is that we don't publicize all of our security measures, because you, it does, it does not make sense to tell everybody what you're doing security-wise and who's going to be where and what our procedures and practices are, but to the extent we can help inform everybody and take ideas from the Student Senate, from the faculty members, from staff, from patrons at the Performing Arts Series or patrons in our, in our cultural events, we want to do that because everybody's goal here is the same. You know, we have a different environment than we've had in the past. We have a different legal environment with respect to weapons that will change, and so we need to figure out the best way to address that. So, very much appreciate you bringing that up. It is, for some reason, when it hits something closer to your own situation, it hits home for all of us, and I think UMCW did that. So, thank you, thank you very much for, for bringing that to our attention. College lobbyist report?
Mr. Carter is not in attendance this evening, but he did forward his report. You all have a copy of that report in front of you. I am going to highlight a couple paragraphs to just cover a few things that he, that he mentioned here in his report. The first one is regarding revenues in Kansas. The Kansas Department of Revenue reported earlier this month that September tax revenues were 31.9 million less than projected, driving the first quarter revenues 61.3 million below estimates and setting the projections of the State General Fund that ending balance for the current fiscal year to the $40 million range. Before this revenue report, the ending balance for the State General Fund was predicted at about 70 million. The first quarter ending figures appear to move that downward to the $40 million neighborhood. Interim committees are in, are in motion in Topeka, and this one, this paragraph is about, "The Special Committee on Taxation will convene on November 5th and 6th to begin the process of reviewing tax exemptions in the state's tax code. On the table are all exemptions, which would include sales tax on services, sales tax on exemptions for purchases by local units of government, sales tax exemptions for charitable organizations such as our own foundation, and also included in this discussion will be tax exemptions used for economic development and other exemptions for individuals or corporations that they are allowed to use in their annual filings with the state." And lastly, an announcement for the, for the Regents and the Regents' News. Today, the Kansas Board of Regents announced Allison Garrett as the 17th president of Emporia State University. Allison Garrett is JD. She has served as the Executive Vice President of Abilene Christian University for the past three years, and before that, as a Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs. She was an Associate Professor of Law and Vice President of Benefits and Compliance as General Counsel. A native of Neosho, Missouri, she received her Doctor of Jurisprudence from the University of Tulsa, University of Tulsa College of Law, and a Bachelor of Arts in English from Oklahoma Christian College. We look forward to working with Allison, as we have a great relationship with Emporia, and we think the future will continue that.
Thank you. Any questions about Mr. Carter's report? Great, so maybe someday we can have a president here that's a lawyer. Wouldn't that be great? Nobody's, nobody thinks so. All right, let's move on to Human Resources Committee.
I never know how to follow you.
Ms. Ingram?
Thank you. The Human Resources Committee met on Monday, October the 5th, and two of the items that we discussed included, the first one being employment engagement survey results. And if you'll remember, two months ago, we had the student engagement survey results, so I really appreciated this report and follow-up. Dr. Corb presented an overview of the college's employment engagement survey results, and she stated that the survey, which was an ACIP action project, was facilitated by Quantum Workplace. Important highlights of the survey results include that JCCC's overall engagement score was 79.72 based on a 100-point scale. The three most favorably rated categories included job satisfaction, ethics, and trust with coworkers. The top three neutral categories were communication, feeling valued, and trust in senior leaders. And the top three areas of opportunity included communication, feeling valued, and manager effectiveness. Department managers have been provided roll-up reports that provide data on their specific work groups. The managers will meet with their work groups and develop individual action plans to maintain or improve engagement. So with that, we decided that communication is really going to be the key to all of this, and we'll be encouraged, and we will then continue to see follow-up as we move forward. The second item was Staff and Organizational Development Report, and Ms. Martley provided an update on the Staff and Organizational Development Department with focus on the following areas. And I will say, there were numerous notes that I took on the 13 pages that we received, but they talked about the following areas being awards and recognition. Noted amongst that was that team effort and extra effort are awarded monthly, which I think is always good, that we are doing something on a monthly basis, so I appreciated that. Grants and financial support, faculty development, and leadership development were three areas where many opportunities are being afforded to staff at this point. Leadership development, mandatory training, technical training, supervisory management and new projects were also included in this report. And the department seems extremely active, and the challenge is to just simply keep those items relevant as we go throughout the year, so that concludes my report.
Any questions for Trustee Ingram? ACIP is part of our accreditation process, and that's one of these projects that's ongoing that we, we do as part of our accreditation.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Trustee Cross.
If I may, the engagement score of 79.72, how does that compare, or is that good? I assume it's good. We wouldn't promote it if it wasn't good.
Well, it's our score. It could be better. I, I'm actually going to give, during the president's monthly report, I'm going to give a little bit more of an overview, and I'll have a little bit more info about that for you, but...
Interested in what the curve is, probably.
Yeah, and we have some benchmark information on how we compare to other institutions as far as that score goes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, learning quality, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met at 8:00 AM on Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, in this very room. Present were Trustee Nancy Ingram and I, along with Vice President Anderson and numerous others. Dennis Ro, Arjo, excuse me, shared that the course modifications were approved by the Educational Affairs Committee for speech, nursing, and math programs, and he said that these changes are part of the general push from the state in accrediting bodies to reduce the number of hours it takes for students to complete. The requested modifications were present, excuse me, requested modifications will be sent to the full board for the approval and can be seen subsequently in the consent addition, consent agenda portion of this board packet. We also discussed Midwest Compounders Pharmacy and Tallgrass Creek Lawrence Public Schools and College and Career Center affiliation agreements. Andy presented a new affiliation agreement with the Midwest Compounders Pharmacy that, when finalized, will benefit Continuing Education Pharmacy Technician Students. Also presented was a Tallgrass Creek agreement that will benefit our credit health occupation students. And he also presented a new faculty use agreement, facility use agreement with Lawrence Public Schools, College and Career Center that will allow us to provide close-to-home classes at the center. The new agreement will provide the college the ability to teach courses at the new facility. Courses to be offered this fall are from the Administration of Justice, Biotechnology, Emergency, Medical Science, English, Health Information Systems, Math, and Reading. The committee reviewed the agreement, which will also be included on the Management Committee agenda this month. JD Gragg presented a new articulation and reverse transfer agreement with the University of Kansas for the new degree partnership program between KU and the college. The MOU for the program is a living document that will be modified as needed as the process moves forward. The program was officially presented to the public at a special kickoff event on September 30th. Representatives from both schools were present to answer questions from students and parents. It was requested that above all, that all of the above agreements be moved forward for full board approval, and details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of this board packet. JD also presented and shared that this program, the Degree Partnership Program, DPP, JCC, University of Kansas, will allow students interested in transferring to KU simultaneously work on upper-level programs, specific courses at KU in Lawrence or in Overland Park while taking classes at the college. Studies have shown that students succeed at a much higher rate using this student model. Not only will students save money by taking core classes at the college here, they will also have a seamless transfer process and receive support from both the college and KU advisors. Registration information, student information, financial aid, et cetera, will be available to and for sharing for both institutions. Andy stated that JD, Abby Kaufman from KU, and many others have worked diligently for almost two years to make this partnership a reality, and I'll say, just in my rough knowledge and my time with the college and my history with the college, that this is really a pretty big deal. Much has been made of it. I'll just compliment Andy and the rest of the staff for doing this. It was 30 years ago, a big deal to my family and connected to KU, and I'm glad it's finally a reality. With respect to monitoring the learning engagement process, Mr. Anderson also reviewed and recommended changes to JCC's degree requirements for the Associate of Arts, Associate of Science, Associate of General Studies, and Associate of Applied Science degrees. The principal change is to eliminate the HPER degree requirement and remove intermediate algebra as fulfilling a free elective toward a degree. Mr. Arjo, Chair of Ed Affairs, outlined concerns that were presented by Joe Weiss, Director of Professional, excuse me, Director, Professor of Physical Education and Wellness. The program disagreed with the recommendation to eliminate one hour of physical education requirement due to the effect it could have on HPER enrollment. Andy said the program has since come up with many good suggestions to promote student wellness on campus, as well as finding ways to encourage students to continue to take HPER courses. These, those proposals will be discussed and considered in upcoming months. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommended changes to the college's degree requirements, as shown subsequently in the consent addition, consent agenda portion of this board packet. And I so move.
There's second, seconded by Trustee Ingram, but moved and seconded to, for the recommendation on changes to JCCC's degree requirements. Is there any discussion? Trustee Ingram?
I just wanted to bring up one thing that I had mentioned, and I know Mr. Anderson is going to talk a little bit further about it, but I think, just as a new trustee, when I heard that we were changing from 64 to 63 hours, my first thought was, okay, how does that affect revenue? I mean, I felt like that was a responsible question to ask, so I did want him to elaborate a little bit on that. He will also share with us that other Kansas border region schools have already done this, which I was not aware of, so I really appreciated that. And then, really, I just wanted to take a moment to thank those in the department before we move forward for their creative thinking and coming up with other suggestions and ideas following the removal of that.
Mr. Anderson, you want to respond to that? And then we'll go to Trustee Cross.
In terms of the revenue, the effect on revenue, of course, is somewhat difficult to tell for sure, because we don't know how many people will continue to take it, take the HPER courses even though they're not required. We know, at least, in just impartial, you know, you sort of superficial surveys that people have done in classes, we know over 50% take it just because they want to. The others, we're not sure of. We know that the various, several programs, EMT, HVAC, various other programs on campus still require the HPER courses as part of their program. That requirement, those requirements will continue, but it will be only as a general requirement that, that it's eliminated. So there's, you know, I suspect there will be some students who don't take it, and that, you know, that will be a decrease in enrollment. The other side of the course is, from the student perspective, it'll be one credit hour that they don't have to pay for, that doesn't count towards transfer when they leave the college as they go to another institution. In terms of, the region schools, of course, have eliminated the HPR requirement really decades ago, frankly. The community colleges, there's, most of them still have the requirement, but they're considering removing it largely because the reverse transfer process, which is designed to facilitate completion of degrees, if you, our requirements for our degree, our Associate of Arts is now more rigorous than the University of Kansas Bachelor of Arts, so you could get advanced degrees at KU, K-State, any of the region schools, and still not qualify for our degree because of that one-hour HPR requirement. So this really brings our program in alignment with, with the region universities, and in fact, one of the, again, another motive for this is actually to facilitate our work with the Degree Partnership Program with KU, which will enable students to move back and forth and complete our degree while they're completing that. So it's, it's, the issues are complicated. It's hard to know what the final, you know, results will be in terms of the financial cost, but we know that, that it will facilitate the moving of, success of students in moving towards completion.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Trustee Ingram, for the question, and Mr. Anderson for the answer. I have no opposition to this, and obviously I moved, trusting staff and my fellow trustees' recommendation. My concern, and you and I discussed it, I think, after the meeting, is in the simple framing of, I'm always surprised at what human beings know and don't know, and what they do and don't do, and, for instance, I know I should exercise, I just don't do it very often. So I think it's critical that, I think our students have some awareness of physical education and health and wellness, and I think that this course serves that purpose. I'm merely just raising the issue and concern, I don't have any opposition to it, but what will we do to promote health and wellness on campus?
Well, and that's an important issue. Again, we started the fitness, you know, initiative, what, a year ago, I guess, here on the campus. With the students, and I met with the HPR faculty, oh, it's been about three weeks ago before I brought this proposal forward, they would like to look at how we use the fitness center, that we opened it up more, more effectively. They would hope, again, just, I think with, with our promotion of the courses on campus, I mean, I think on our webpage and so on, there are ways that we can probably promote that. The wellness initiative on campus, of course, is one that needs attention. We need to do all we can do to promote it. Making that one-hour degree requirement may have just as been, it may not necessarily have caused people to take it. In other words, the students would just transfer away from the college, short one hour, and not complete their degree. So our, our hope is, is that we can come up with, with more effective ways of promoting fitness without always trying to solve the problem by adding another requirement for graduate, you know, to graduate with, with a degree. I, it is going to receive attention this year. I mean, it's one of the things, the HPR faculty, they have some ideas. Mostly, it's their ideas right now, have focused... Mostly, it's their ideas right now, have focused on how to make the fitness center more available and to promote those courses, but that's, I don't have a specific, you know, what we're going to do yet, but we will have discussion over that, and I think they have ideas, so.
Thank you.
Dr. Sopjik.
I'd like to commend Mr. Anderson for his effort and his persistence in this matter. A change is really hard, and changing these graduation requirements that have been in place for, when was the last time, Andy, we adjusted our graduation?
Eighties.
In the eighties. So it's about 40 years ago, almost half a century. And that's a hard thing for people to, to deal with, and it's not easy to make happen. So I'd just like to applaud Andy for his perseverance, and also the cooperation of the faculty and the whole process that he undertook to make this. I think it's a huge step forward for us.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
With respect to monitoring faculty development, Andy Anderson made a presentation about Anita goodness.
Teve.
Teve, excuse me. Professor and Chair of Legal Studies has been granted Professor Emeritus status. Anita retired on June 30th, 2015, after 27 years of full-time service to the college. She has been a strong asset to her program, division in the entire college, and she'll be missed greatly, and I apologize for mispronouncing that. With respect to review and update of student policies, Dr. Weber, Randy Weber, presented and shared that this, there will be reviews and updates to student policies which are a part, um, excuse me, Randy shared that this policy update is a part of the review of all student policies to bring them up to date. This is a report of the Learning Quality Committee that we've reviewed and recommended updates to Student Code of Conduct Policy. The proposed updates add new sections addressing bullying, financial responsibility, as well as new subcategories of sexual misconduct acquired by recently amended federal law. Other sections have been updated to improve clarity and update references to related college policies. The proposed changes also include reorganization and alphabetization of policy sections. Apparently, in the practice of law, I don't read big words. It is recommended, it is a recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of college, the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the Student Code of Conduct Policy as shown below. And I so move.
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Ingram. Are there any questions or discussion? Trustee Cross?
Yes, if I may, and I'll be really quickly done with you hearing my voice, Mr. Chair. I think some of these policy revisions are good, I think they're already on the books. I think they're also important to highlight and raise up, that they'll be in place if and when guns are finally allowed on campus, and that there'll be codes of conduct, uh, that I'm assuming people that carry guns are still responsible to maintain. Is that correct, if I may ask, Mr. Chair and to the staff? Like, just because you can bring a gun doesn't mean you can bully, brandish a firearm in contravention of Kansas law, correct?
That's correct.
I would assume that, it would depend on the legislation and the form when it takes effect. In the current form, on July 1, 2017, you, you would be able to carry a weapon on campus in any buildings that aren't, don't have otherwise adequate security provisions, but you can't, that doesn't give you the permission to do other things that are violative either our policy or, or Kansas law, be my presumption. Some of these, it looks like, will need modify, modification at that time if, when that law takes, takes place, but.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much, trustee Cross. We'll move on to the Management Committee, and I think trustee Lindstrom, are you doing that in the absence of Dr. Cook?
I am. Dr. Cook has some large shoes to fill. I have some large shoes to fill with his report. By the way, President Sopjik, I don't think the eighties were that long ago.
Some really great football played in the eighties, if I remember right.
That's not what I'm referencing to. Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to present the management report for this evening. The Management Committee met at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, October 7th, here in the boardroom. The info related to the Management Committee information begins on page 19 and runs through page 31 of the board packet. The committee has three recommendations to present this, this evening. The first recommendation deals with retirement incentive program trust account. In order to implement the program, a new trust account is necessary. This account will be used for investment funds in a health reimbursement account and for subsequent reimbursement of qualified medical expenses of program participants. Therefore, the Management Committee recommends that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to establish a trust account with Johnson County Community College's current banking institution, U.S. Bank, for the investment of funds in a health reimbursement account and for subsequent disbursement of funds to programs, participants, and that such trust account be administered by the Johnson County Community College Administration in accordance with applicable regulations. The Management Committee also recommends that the Board of Trustees appoint Johnson County Community College's Executive Vice President of Finance and Administrative Services as the trustee of the trust account with full power and authority to make all decisions required to be made as the trustee and to report at least annually to the Board of County Commission, Board of Trustees concerning the trust account, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been seconded by trustee Sharp, discussion on the retirement incentive program trust account. If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, our next recommendation is in regard to fiscal year 2016, 2017 tuition. The FY 216-17 tuition recommendation balances modest increases in in-district Kansas resident and out-of-state per credit hour rates, with the introduction of a new metro rate for bordering counties in Missouri. The Board of Trustees discussed the tuition pricing within its broader context of college enrollment strategies in its retreat earlier this month, and this issue was reviewed by the Management Committee the last two meetings. A determination on the FY 216-217 tuition rates will guide the administration in its budget planning in the coming months, and it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve tuition rates for FY 16-17 as follows, subject to the adjustment by Board of Trustees based on updated revenue estimates in February of 2016. In-district rate will be $93 per credit hour. Kansas resident rate will be $110 per credit hour. The metro rate, the new metro rate, will be $135 per hour, and the out-of-state rate will be $220 per hour, and I will make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation of the Management Committee and the college administration to approve the tuition rates as stated by trustee Lindstrom. Dr. Sopjik, you want to make comment on this?
Sure. I'd like to commend Dr. Weber, Dr. Larson, for their hard work on this, for the research that went into it, the rationale as to why it was presented. I think this is a first for the college. The big one there is the inclusion of the metro rate. Additionally, this is the smallest percentage that in-districts have received versus other, the other categories there. So we look forward to the discussion, and again, hats off to everybody who worked on this one.
Is it, is my understanding correct that many other community colleges in Kansas and other colleges and universities in the metro area do, do a similar thing with surrounding counties even though they may cross the state line?
Absolutely.
And that we'll be reviewing this and monitor, we talked about it at a retreat, and this is a first step, and we can adjust it as we see how, how it actually works in the real world, if you will. Other questions? If not, all in favor of the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chair, our final recommendation is in regards to MA5, Monitor Business Services. It relates to a bid RFP review. The purpose of this RFP was to establish an annual contract for prime vendor, for a prime vendor for food and, and supplies. On September 22nd, 2011, the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of an annual contract with Cisco Food Services of Kansas City for an initial term of one year, with the option of, to renew for four additional years in one-year increments upon approval of both parties. This renewal is for the period of October 1st, 2015, through September 30th, 2016, and represents the fourth of four annual renewal options. So we submit the following recommendation, and that is that the Management Committee, the recommendation of the Management Committee, that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of annual contract for prime food vendor and supplies with Cisco Food Services of Kansas City Incorporated at an annual expenditure not to exceed $800,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the recommendation with respect to Cisco Food Services. Are there any questions? This being the fourth of four years, and next year it will go back out to bid, I assume?
That's correct.
Okay. There's no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Wait, wait, one quick question. What were other options other than Cisco when, when bid?
There were three respondents, American Food Service, Cisco, and U.S. Food Service, Inc.
That was it?
Was it.
Thank you.
Seven firms were originally notified. According to the summary here, three responded, and of those three, Cisco was selected in 2011, and this would be their fourth year of, of their four-year contract. All right, I think we had all the ayes. Is there, are there any nays? If not, the recommendation is adopted unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In other reports, information was presented about two agreements outside agents, with outside agencies, which can be found on the consent agenda on page 51 of the board packet. The first agreement is a facility use agreement with Lawrence Public Schools, and the second agreement is with American Association of University Professors to develop a web portal for their faculty compensation survey. Rachel Lurch gave a budget monthly update. The update included tentative timeline for amendments to the current year budgets and a preliminary budget calendar and guidelines for fiscal 16-17. Mitch Borchers presented the sole source report, as well as the summary of bids between $25,000 and $100,000, which can be found on page 21 of the board packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and his report is on page 25 of the packet. Mr. Hayes also reported the Collison Center renovation project. A quarterly update on projects in information services was provided to the committee, and this report begins on 26 of the, page 26 of the packet. Finally, Mary O'Sullivan presented a report on help desk activities. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much for stepping in for Dr. Cook and presenting the report. Any questions of trustee Lindstrom?
And by the way, trustee Cook was just elected, if it hasn't already been mentioned, to the, the West Coast Region Board of Directors for the Association of Community College Trustees.
I think we're going to include that, but yeah, Dr. Cook was at the ACCT convention in San Diego. Very, very good thing for the college to have somebody on the national board, and not only was he elected as a director in the Western Region, but he was promptly promoted to chair of that region. When I talked to Dr. Cook yesterday, I think there are 13, 14 states and three Canadian provinces, so I think his territory that he now governs stretches from northern Texas to southern Alaska.
Including Toronto.
Does he include Toronto?
He's trying to get me to walk with him all of those.
So we will have a, an ear and a voice at the table for national and international community college matters. That is a great thing. Thanks for reminding us of that, David. Next item, we move to the president's recommendation, and I think we go right back to you, David, for treasurer's report.
Okay. I'm pleased to present the treasurer's report for the month ending August 31st, 2015. The report can be found in the board packet on pages numbered 21 to 31. A few items of note include, on page one of the treasurer's report is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. As of August 31st, we are two months into the college 15-16 fiscal year. State aid payments of $11,145,581 were received during August and will be recorded in the general post-secondary technical education funds. Ad valorem property tax distribution of $4.3 million was received in September and will be reflected in next month's report. The college book balance of cash and investments as of August 31st, 2015, in all funds was $104 million. The college's unencumbered balance as of August 31st, 2015, in all funds was $82.9 million, approximately $6.1 million higher than the same time last year. Expenditures were in the primary operating funds in our within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of August 31st, 2015, subject to an audit, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the treasurer's report. Are there any questions or any discussion? The only thing I noticed I went through here is we talk about our reserves and how we're trying to build those back up, and we're now including in there a chart of our, of our unencumbered cash on a monthly basis. Our monthly low always comes at December 31st, and we're now about $30 million at the low, which is about three months' worth of our operating expenses, which are over $10, $10 million a month. So when we look at reserves and try to figure out what the right amount, it doesn't appear to, that we're being overly cautious when we only have three months' worth of reserves as of December 31. Any other comments?
I, just, just one comment, and this is, I didn't make this in my report, but I, I keep a separate spreadsheet so that I can follow this a little bit in my own way. And, and there are, I need to publicly mention President Sopjik and his staff. Nineteen consecutive months, we have had a positive book balance at the college, and that's quite remarkable. I hope I don't jinx it by saying it.
Need to hit the, knock on wood. All right, great, great comment. Yeah, I think we have a great team, financial team, and I know Rachel isn't here today, but you.
She's active.
Where is she? Oh, I didn't, can't see you, but great team for all of our financial purposes, and we really appreciate that. I know that each of us up here do, because that, that is a protection that we all like to have. All right, all in favor of adopting the treasurer's report, say aye.
Aye.
Or nay? Post, say nay? Motion's carried unanimously. All right. I think we'll skip the president's monthly report to the board. No, Dr. Sopjik, please let us hear the monthly report.
We're not, I, I'm sorry, we're not going to have a lightning round tonight, but we are going to have a lightning strike of a report by Dr. Corb on the employee engagement survey. So Judy?
We are looking forward to this, because this was an important part of what you've been doing and what we need to do at the college. So thank you, Judy.
Yes, you're welcome. Well, this is a, an overview, and it's, it's condensed a bit from what we did at HR Committee, but hopefully we'll give you enough information that will give you a good idea of the data that we got from the survey. Just to remind you, it was an Aquip action project, and getting the survey done was the first part of it. It is ongoing in the, in that it is now a second Aquip action project for us to actually take the results and do something with it. So when we go through and we look at this, I will remind you that engagement is not necessarily the same thing as employee satisfaction. Engagement has other pieces that they consider, and the primary anchors or items that they considered in engagement were advocacy, discretionary effort, and intent to stay. So basically, they're looking at, how do employees talk about the college, about the people that work here, about what, what goes on? How do they feel about it, and what do they say about it? How much discretionary effort are employees willing to put in? How hard do they work to improve processes? Things like that. And then, do they intend to stay? Is, is it a place that they want to continue to work? And all of those pieces are what form the anchor parts of what make up our overall engagement score. So just a quick look at the results, we had 50.9% of our employees responded to the survey. survey. That's not great, but it's not bad. It's, it gives us good data, but we're hoping to increase that next time around. Our overall engagement score, 79.72, and I'll get to, I have a, in a couple of slides, I have some benchmarking information that we'll get to Trustee Cross's earlier question. But, out of the categories that are in the engagement survey, the most favorably rated categories were job satisfaction, ethics, and trust with coworkers. And I, I'm going to clarify, just because sometimes the ethics one can be misinterpreted. We had one question on the employee engagement survey that had to do with actual ethics point, reporting ethics issues, and that is what this question really refers to, and so it was rated very high, that people do know how to report an ethical issue. But, it, it doesn't really have to do with just overall ethics and our things done ethically. Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit, needs to be interpreted. Least favorably rated categories included communication, feeling valued, and trust in senior leaders. So, we can break that down just a little bit, but when you look at the, the response rate, we had, out of 1,761, the number that that equates to is we did have 896 responses. So, again, not as high as we would like to have, but out of 896 responses, you can draw some, some good overall conclusions from that. Employee profile, when you look at how the, how it divided out as far as our engagement score, 46% of our employees fell within that engaged category, and so that is high, highly favorable with regard to advocates of the organization, their intent to stay, and put in high discretionary effort. When you look at the second category, contributing, 39% contributing, and that's moderately favorable, held back some, but, and probably an opportunity for some increase there, but definitely still leaning to the favorably side, considering that a contributing employee. Disengaged, 13%. Indifferent, lack of motivation and at risk for retention. And again, these are all determined just based on how they answered the questions in this employee engagement survey. And then, just a, a small 3% falling in that hostile category, which is negative, lack of commitment, and probably a negativity that does impact their own productivity and potentially productivity of others. Again, in a couple of slides, I have a little bit of benchmarking, oh, no, in this slide, I have a little bit of benchmarking information that will kind of show you how this shakes out in comparison to other institutions. So, if you look over there on the left-hand side, that overall score, you see the Johnson County Community College on the far left, and that shows our engagement score of the 79. First-year team pulse, that is other organizations in the first year that they took an engagement survey, this is team pulse survey is what this survey is called. And so, other organizations in their first year actually ranked a little bit lower than what, what we did. Educational services, the, this company works with all different kinds of organizations, so they did segment out their educational services, and you see that those were, again, slightly lower than ours, 78.35. Regional organizations around the same size as us, as far as a number of employees, that kind of thing, is that next bar, they're at 82.49.
That's non-educational.
Right.
Just based on employee size.
That's everybody. So, they, yes, that can be corporations, that's not just educational. National, same size, and then regional, same size best, meaning at the top quadrant of those regional, same-size organizations. So, that gives you an idea of where, you know, where we rank in this very first year of this survey. Then, when you look at the engagement profiles, and you see our profile, that's what I just showed you on that other slide, and when you look at that in comparison to other colleges, you see that our score is not that much different. It does get into some. Our regional, same size, obviously their engagement was higher, and, and, and some of these, we, we don't know, these organizations may have been doing these longer, so may have had an opportunity to get some baseline data, work on some of these things, and change their, change their scores, which would be our goal, would be that we would come up with some things that we would be able to do that would then increase our scores as well. Now, there's, just to dig a little further into the data, I'm not going to go through all of the questions or, or show you every single category, but this will give you an idea of how we ranked, and in some of the categories, where, where we ranked in each of these. So, areas where we excel, job satisfaction, ethics, trust with coworkers, retention, and alignment with goals. And so, these categories are the ones where, when employees answered questions in each of these categories, they answered clear to that favorable end of each of those items that are in these different categories, which placed those at the top end of, of where we Most uncertainty, and this is in the, so this is just that middle category where people marked, you know, I, I don't know, I'm really not sure, I'm kind of neutral on this, communication, feeling valued, trust in senior leaders, teamwork, and individual contribution. So, again, those are categories where there were questions in each of those categories, the way they answered, in those areas, there was, there was some uncertainty there, so didn't really lean to the favorable side or to the negative side. Unfavorable categories are where we can improve, communication, feeling valued, manager effectiveness, trust in senior leaders, and individual contribution. Now, you'll see that some of these things show up on both of these charts, okay, and that's just because they ranked that high in their, people marking them either uncertain or low, and so that's why some of these show up in more than one of those categories. Because if you look at the chart, they, more answers were in the uncertain and the, the low end than in the favorable. So, some of them end up in each of those categories. Based on how individuals answered questions, they pulled from that the 10 engagement drivers for Johnson County Community College. And so, basically, out of all of the questions, when you look at the scores, and they, there's a, there's a whole sheet on how they actually go through the calculation to come up with these things, but they identified these items as our top 10 engagement drivers. And the reason that this is important to us is that these are actionable. So, there are, there are things that we can do around each one of these things that would probably give us the highest impact in raising our engagement score, because they are the most important drivers for engagement for Johnson County Community College.
Were these drivers offered as part of the survey, or were they generated from the survey? Were they just?
They're part of the questions that were on the survey.
Okay. So, it was like a multiple choice type question?
So, these are, these were questions that people then ranked, I agree with this, I disagree, you know, they, they were part of the questions that were in the survey, and the way people answered those questions led them to these being the top 10, and this is what most drives engagement for Johnson County Community College. Coming back again to those points of advocacy, discretionary effort, those are the anchors, and then these are the things that drove those when they did their analysis of all of our answers. So, these are, and, but one of the main reasons that this is important to us is because these are actionable, these are things that we could take, we could make a plan of action around them to increase the engagement scores. And that's really the next step. When we look at this going forward, and we look at our new Aquip action project, supervisors are expected to take their own team results. What, what I showed you was Johnson County Community College results, but as an individual supervisor, this data within the system can be segmented, so I can pull up just my team, and I can look at my team, I can look at my team's score in comparison to the organization, I can look at what my team said about what was important to them, and, you know, what, what things stood out for my team, and then, thus, we have an expectation that supervisors will have a discussion with their team members around that, get more information. Obviously, when you have quantitative data, you have some data points, and you're not exactly sure why people might have answered the way that they did, and this is a plan to drive some conversation around that, to get additional information. And then, our supervisors are expected to develop an action plan where they will actually come up with, based on our results, what can we do in order to help really maintain, enhance our engagement in the future? And so, that's the, that's the next step, and that's where we are with the overall survey. Other questions?
Did we, did we or could we see the, or even take the entire survey ourselves? I mean, is there a way, it'd be interesting to know the dropdowns and what people are asking.
We, I mean, we can, I can get that to you, you, you didn't get to take it.
I know that, I remember that.
But you, but we can get that, I can get you an expanded report that would show you really all of the questions that were asked and, and that kind of thing. It's just a lot for this kind of presentation.
Right, no, I understand.
But I can get that to you if you'd like to see it.
I, I'll, I'll talk to you later. If somebody wants it, talk to, talk to Judy and figure out how much you want, but it, because it's, but it would be interesting, I think, to go through the questions.
But there's a presentation that has, like, each of the categories, and has the questions, and shows, you know, that this many people answered favorably, this many people answered uncertain. It, it shows all of that, so I'm happy to get that to you if you'd like to see it.
Trustee Cross?
Because I enjoy playing the contrarian. Negative meant lack of engagement, as we defined it. Criticism equal.
Well, depending on how the question was.
Or not engaged?
How, how the question was worded, because there could be things that you could strongly disagree with that would indicate an engagement, depending on how the questions were actually worded.
That's my next question, so that's me being hard on you. And then, the next one, the follow-up is, it seems to me it was a series of questions that they had to answer, in the dropdown, I think, Trustee Chair Muzel's point, seeing the questions, I would like to see how they were asked, and then, how we determine someone was not engaged with a negative attitude. I, I don't think negative means not engaged, because I just, you pay a problem or something.
Sure, well, but we can, I can get that to you, and you can see how the questions were, and they were, you know, I agree with this, I disagree with this, and so that, the statement was there, and then individuals chose their answer, and then, there's, even in the notes to this, there's a whole thing about how it went into a matrix, and what they did with it, and how they scored it, and then how it turned out, and where the drivers came from. So, I can get that information to you, because I have it, and so it's not a problem.
Trustee Sharp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two-part question. Did we ask everyone to complete it, full-time, part-time, adjunct? And if so, what was the breakdown of respondents? What, what does this tell us? Are we able to break down that adjuncts are happier than full-time, that the people that are here on campus all the time, or vice versa?
Okay, we, we gave it out to 1,700 employees, all right? There were category, and so, yes, it did go to full-time, it went to part-time, it went to adjunct. It did not go to some temporary employees, and so there were some employee groups that did not get it. But, for the most part, most full and part-time and adjunct employees got it. I'm sure that they could divide the data by that employee profile based on full-time, part-time. That is not how the data came to us. What we got was by supervisor. So, a supervisor, if they had full and part-time people, you know, so I did get this question, and you could tell, like, you could go look at a dean who primarily has faculty reporting to them, you could divide the information out that way, but we didn't get it. We didn't get a report that said faculty answered like this, staff answered like this. We didn't get that type of report. They can probably do that, but we didn't get it that way.
It might be interesting, and we, our efforts may be more effective if we're able to micro-target. If we're trying, if the majority of the people who aren't happy are adjunct, and we're trying something on campus all the time, it's not going to meet those objectives and, and, you know what I'm saying? Micro-targeting that data will help us be more effective, and then make the people who are trying to positively impact happier.
Right. Can we segment the data that way? It didn't come to us like that, did it?
No, and part of our reasoning initially was to maintain anonymity.
Right.
Sure.
But I'm sure it's a reporting problem to get if it.
And for your purposes, not necessarily for ours, but as you start to implement these things to improve morale, that, that would be helpful.
What, what our goal is, because we know that engagement really happens at the individual level, it's really individual people, individual departments, and so those conversations that supervisors have within their departments to figure out what is important to us, what's important to us as a group, is really where we want the conversations to happen, the change to really take place, because that's what will change overall engagement, more so than us coming up with a college-wide initiative to do something. But, that could be, I mean, maybe we need to do something like that, too, but we're really hoping that those individual conversations are what will drive actual change for the individual employee, which will raise the engagement. Yes?
Trustee Lindstrom?
Judy, were there any, was there any data that seemed to contradict itself?
I don't know if there was any that, that, because of the way that, that we got the data, it would show, you know, there were clearly on every question, there are some people that would answer really high, you know, this is awesome, and others would say, no, it isn't. So, there, on every question, there was a continuum, but I don't know that there was, I don't remember anything really that was, do you? And we did ask, we asked one open-ended question on what you could do to improve, you know, what could we do to improve at the college? And we got a lot of comments in there, and we are going through those comments, but they weren't all, always really directly related back to the questions that were in the, the survey. So, we're trying to get people to focus on the quantitative data, what the survey results said, start there, and then, if there are other things that we could do as a result of some of those comments, but, but even in that, it wasn't really concrete.
Okay, great.
I had a question about how our 50.9% response rate stacks up to what Quantum has done other places, especially Educational Services, because I, most surveys, that sounds pretty good to me. You were, you're, you want more always, but.
Well, and I think, didn't they say that was a little low?
It was a little low.
Right.
On the educational side, but not necessarily the first year, the first time they take it, from the right line there.
And how, how long did it take you? I assume this was online? How long did it take you? Because when I get those surveys, I want, it, it says estimated time, five minutes, and it's always 10, and so, at some point, people, you, did you see people dropping off? Or how, how big an effort is this?
Short.
Really?
I, yeah, I can't remember, but it was less than 10 minutes, wasn't it? It, it was, yeah, so there were, I can't remember the exact number of questions, but it didn't take long to, to take it, and you went through and then.
I understand Trustee Sharp's comments about micro-targeting, but I'm also, I think the more you target that and get, and potentially lose the anonymity, the fewer people you're going to have participate in. I don't know what the right balance is, but I think you have to be careful about, to get frank, candid answers, people have to be assured that it's, it will be anonymous. So, that's, that's a danger.
And we anticipate that if people, a lot of times, people want to know, what are you going to do with this? So, once people see what we're going to do with it, and that we are actually trying to take it and make some changes or, or talk about it, then hopefully people the next time around would think, okay, if I fill this out, this could actually make a positive difference.
Yep. Other questions or comments? Thank you. That was very helpful, those of us who weren't on HR.
Surprisingly.
No, not surprisingly. It's an important, it's an important aspect, no matter how much we might joke about different presentations, this one in particular is important to us.
Dr. Korb, is there a trustee engagement survey that we could possibly contract with?
We're not doing that now.
Good, okay.
I, I figured the 1% to 3% hostile was probably us. I figured the 1% to 3% hostile was probably us. Okay, is there anything else on the president's report?
Yes, there is.
There is?
There is. I didn't want to disappoint you. A couple things. You have the monthly report to the board, it's a fantastic report, as it always is, highlighting so many activities and things that are happening on campus. I want to point out a few of those. Our Johnson County of the Year this year, as you all know, is Mary Davison Cohen. We'll be celebrating our Summit and Chanted Evening Gala on November 14th. Our revenues will surpass probably, definitely will surpass half a million, we think it could be an all-time record. But this is what's really cool about this event this year. You know, historically, we've always had student participation. Students have perhaps prepared some food or they've helped serve, they've done videos. This year, Mary will be wearing a dress that was designed and made by a student in our fashion merchandise and design department, which is really very cool. Her name is Kimby Sweeney, and I can tell you, this is the first time in history of the event that anyone has ever worn clothes actually produced by one of our students. So we're very excited about that. Our cosmetology program is working with TLC in Olathe to provide free haircut services for youth who are involved there. It's a great demonstration of collaboration in the community. As you all know, TLC is a Kansas-based organization that provides shelter and social services to children and youth who are facing abuse, neglect, or family disruption. So it's an outstanding demonstration by our cosmetology department of getting out there. We are one of four community colleges participating in a national science foundation grant that's entitled Creating Pathways for Big Data Careers. You know, we are all about student success and pathways is where it's at today. The long-term goal is to prepare students in technician education programs for employment in big data by aligning college programs' curricula to industry needs and expectations. Our information services department welcomed its first student help desk technicians. Student workers will focus on JCCC password-related support requests as well as development of technical support regarding knowledgeable articles. These student workers will help to reduce our call hold times, but more importantly, we are giving them an opportunity to succeed by providing relevant work experience. This is another example of what we're doing on this campus to benefit students. On September 30th, the Greater Kansas City Restaurant Association hosted an event in our Hospitality and Culinary Academy, which featured a special guest, Lydia Bastianich. Lydia Bastianich is actually related to Ron Palczek and myself. She is of course, you don't mind that joke, do you, Ron? Okay, mine too. But of course, she's of Lydia's fame. Our athletic teams are off to a great start as volleyball, men's and women's soccer are all nationally ranked. Our career development center is expanding their list of employer mentors as we currently have 47 volunteer mentors from a variety of industries. Also, job postings are up. We had 225 employers posting for jobs and internships. This is another great opportunity for our students. When you look, there's a chart in that report of counseling sessions. You'll note that our sessions are considerably up from 2014. Also, we co-chaired the first networking program for 125 students with KU Edwards and KU Lawrence in our own counselors. This is all about the new dual-degree program, or DDP, the program with the University of Kansas. We are also working really hard on recruitment, and when you see the number of campus visits, the presentations being given in high schools across the county, all the college fairs we attend, I have to say, it's like saturation coverage. We're doing an absolutely terrific job and that's represented with the results. Now, in the future, upcoming events. On Thursday, October 29th, at Logistics Park in Kansas City, or Logistics Park, Kansas City in Edgerton, there will be a free open house at the new learning and career center from 4:00 to 7:00. I'm going to give you an idea of some of the classes that we're offering down there. They'll include warehousing logistics, OSHA-compliant forklift training, personal development and workplace skills, and also commercial truck driving. I met with Dr. Antle today and he reminded me that he'll be presenting at the Annual Association for the Advancement of Sustainability in Higher Education. It's a conference to be held in Minneapolis this October. Jay will be featured in the networking lunch and also taking part in a plenary session on the future of sustainability in higher ed. He'll be sitting alongside representatives from Western Michigan University, Emory University, and MIT, Massachusetts Institute of Technology. And a student, one of our students will also be presenting a poster on various, on our student-funded reupholstery projects on campus. It's a great opportunity for Jay, for the student, and also elevates our entire institution on a national level. Lastly, on Thursday, November 5th, as part of our Veterans Week celebration in the Polsky Series in Yardley Hall, we'll feature Texas singer-songwriter Darden Smith for our veterans-focused Polsky Series event. Darden will be here for two days, visiting classes and conducting songwriting workshops with our veteran students. He provides veterans with the opportunity to express themselves in song. This is what he does. The concert is on the 5th and it's free to the public. We hope you all have the opportunity to attend. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Questions of President's object? Thank you, Joe, for that update. Always a lot of good things going on. No old business that I'm aware of, or new business, report from board liaison, faculty association, Lydia's, I'm sorry?
With respect to new business, could I raise an issue of having the college look into, what would it cost or what would the legalities be of asking the state to help fund the security measures to protect the campus when we have to allow guns on campus?
I think that as part of the review that we did initially and the review that is ongoing, there will be estimates of costs if we were to impose adequate security measures at buildings, which basically means a metal detector and a person at every entrance. And there, including options of closing off some entrances and things like that. So we'll have that cost information and I think at that point, we can then make sure to forward that on to members of the legislature and public policy decision-makers to, so that they're aware of the cost that somebody will have to bear if those security measures are to be in place.
Right. Then will we have a retreat on this? It'd been discussed in some emails that we might have a retreat on this.
I suspect that this will be a retreat topic.
Trustee Cross, currently, excuse me, there is a group that's been brought together that worked very hard the first time around when this issue came up several years ago. The professionals on campus who deal with this every day, they'll be putting some information together, will also be reinstituting the COPs Committee, which we talked about in collegial steering, which has a much broader scope with the campus involved to collect this information and be putting it together in some coherent and hopefully actionable fashion. So that's where we're at this point in time. I believe we're still a year and a half out from when that will potentially be implemented. So.
So I think it is a topic, and I know we're trying to have a retreat at least quarterly and that this would be a good topic for that, but I think what we want to do is let the professional security folks do their review and the COPs Group, which will include faculty and staff, do their work and then so we have something to come back with and report on, but it's obviously a topic that we're going to need to address.
I just think as a human being, a Christian and as a citizen, I want to do everything I can to prevent situations like that from happening here. So no retreat then on this now to schedule?
Well, I don't think, I think we're gathering the information and doing the analysis that will allow us to have a retreat topic where we can actually, you know, come out of it with something to accomplish.
I trust that this board, this administration, and the staff, and including the police department here that we employ, is doing a fabulous job on this. I voted unanimously with the board to opt out of the four years. I'm nevertheless pushing the issue and perpetually thorn in your side on this because I want to sleep at night.
We will be addressing this, there's no option but to address it and we will be addressing it at the right time. So thank you for bringing it up. All right, Faculty Association, Lydia's third cousin, Ron Palczek.
Didn't bring my book this time. Thank you, Chairman Musel. As you recall, last time I wore all black in anticipation of the loss of the Denver Broncos to our Kansas City Chiefs. Well, it didn't work. Nor have our Chiefs done well since. Therefore, I decided not to wear black until the Chiefs start to win again. But tomorrow, and I hope everyone else, we'll be wearing blue tomorrow for our other team in town. We're in our 10th week of the fall semester and of a typical 16-week semester, and everything's winding down. And we're heading towards our finals, we're finishing up projects, some students are starting to read the book and continuing our courses. But I do want to talk a little bit, this is directed to Dr. Korbe, when she was doing the quant evaluation, I wanted to relate that it's similar to what we do for the faculty when we have student evaluations. And it's a great tool to learn from, and I commend the college for doing this. When I see my student evaluations, I can tell you honestly that I've changed my courses according to the student evaluations. Some years I've gotten some bad evaluations and I took heart and looked at it and changed some things. Some things I knew that, you know, students didn't know what they were talking about in that particular case, but in a lot of cases, I did make changes. And it really did make a great difference in my teaching and my connection with my students. And the part that was very meaningful to me when a student evaluation comes by is the part where they added the comments, because the normal fill-in-the-bubble parts, you know, they either love you or hate you, or in-between, but that fill-in-the-parts, that's where I really made my changes. And I commend this school for looking at all the parts that you're writing in, that's a lot of tasks to do. And I wish I had 59% rate on return to my surveys. We need to increase that. Is there anything I can offer them? Okay. There were some other things that I would like to talk about. When I was at the foundation dinner on Tuesday night, and we were, it was a fabulous dinner, by the way, I love Halibut, thank you. And we were on the stage of the Carlson Center. And what I really was moved by was, again, we had some students there that were talking about how we, the foundation especially, but the college, has changed their lives. And every time I hear it, I'm just amazed and I'm proud of our foundation, and I'm proud of the fact that our foundation raises more money every year. And if you're a student, or if you're a parent out there and you're listening to this, please come here and apply for scholarships. We want to meet your needs and that may be the thing that we need to do. And some of the things that I got out of this, and I want to report this to the board too, because you've probably heard it, but it's always good to hear it again. And we offer so much here at this school. The simple thing of just the typical lecture class come in. We have things like a flipped classroom. We do hybrid classes. We do online classes. We have self-paced classes. We have night classes, weekend classes. We're going to try that winter session that we mentioned, and we will be up and running a little bit more next winter, not this coming winter, but a little bit this winter. And talk to Andy Anderson if you want any more information about that. But other things this college does that we don't really talk about, and that is, we have study abroad. We need to get that out. And one of the students that spoke at the stage, I was sitting right next to him, it was really fun to talk to him. He went to China for a whole semester. It was fabulous what he gained from there. And then he hitchhiked for six months across Asia. I envy him. You know, I envy him. Maybe I can do that in retirement. There's travel exchanges, there's all kinds of opportunities that this college offers our students. And we offer our faculty as well and staff. We have, yeah, I don't know if I want to go any further into that area, but I do want to remind you of the JCC vision and that JCC will be a national leader to educational excellence and innovation, and those are some of the things that I was thinking about. And with that, I'd like to close and say thank you to Chairman Musel and good night. And is there any questions for me?
Questions for Ron? When you started mentioning Judy's presentation, I just knew you were going to point out that on her pie chart, it added up to 101%. I'm sure it was rounding.
Mine always add up to 99%.
Okay, well.
We average out to be okay.
I think of math every time I see you, Ron. Thank you for that update and especially reminding us of our mission, because that's always a good thing to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Johnson County Educational Research Triangle, Dr., trustee Lindstrom.
I hope Ron gets to wear black soon. Maybe Sunday. Mr. Chairman, pleased to report that the Johnson County Research Triangle Authority, or JSERT, excuse me, I attended my first meeting as the college representative of this body on July 20th. The meeting was held at K-State Olathe Campus. It was a short meeting. We welcomed two new members, myself and Jason Osterhaus, who now represents the Board of County Commissioners on that board. We were updated on an RFP for a two-year contract for a PR firm to enhance JSERT's communication strategy and implement a PR plan. We received an invoice from the law firm that represents the organization. They received year-end financials and updates regarding activities at the universities. And they received an audit from Ben Hart, from Alan Gibbs, and Holick. I'm pleased to report that tax receipts for the last three months are up for the same time last year. August was up 1%, I mean, I'm sorry, July was up 1%. August was up 2% and September was up 6.5%. I know the report was made earlier as it relates to the statewide that receipts are down, but in Johnson County, receipts for September were 6.5% positive, which I think is terrific. So since the July meeting, I have also had an opportunity to orient myself with two-thirds of the triangle. On 9/11, I met with David Cook and Vice Chancellor of KU Edwards Center, and he gave me a tour of that facility. And on September 14th, I toured the KU Clinical Research Center in Fairway and met with Jeff Reeny, who's the COO, Dr. Stephen Wilkerson, who is the Director of the Clinical Research Center, and Dr. Roy Jensen, Director of the KU Cancer Center. Our next meeting for the JSERT is Monday, October 26th, this coming Monday, no, next, a week from Monday, October 26th, at the KU Edwards Campus at 7:30 a.m. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Lindstrom on the JSERT? All right, if not, the next item is the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees' report. Been no meeting since our last meeting and Dr. Cook is our liaison to that, and we've talked about his wonderful election. So move on to the consent agenda. The board will consider the consent agenda, which includes a number of routine and consensus items, typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board will request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered and debated and voted on separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove and have considered separately? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried unanimously. We have no executive session tonight. Before we ask our motion for adjournment, I do want to welcome to the meeting Chris Gray, our Executive Director for Marketing Communications. Welcome to the college, we're looking forward to great things, as we are from everybody in the room. Sincerely, welcome, welcome to the team, we're looking forward to working with you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you all.